The meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. This is our meeting for October the 26th. We'll ask that you please stand. And I will lead the prayer this morning and the pledge. I'm doing it all this morning, so if you will plow, we'll have the prayer. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day that you've given us and the opportunity we've come to do your work. Father, we're thankful for this county. We're thankful for the place that we live. We're thankful for so many things that we have, and we do know that they all come from you. We ask that you be with those who are dealing with issues, dealing from this pandemic that we have, those who are dealing with those that are ill. Father, we ask that you be with our individuals who are on the front line, and we ask that you continue to watch over and protect them. Be with each and every one of us, protect us and guide us. We offer this prayer in our son's holy name. Our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I must read this statement, and then, once I read this, I would like for a motion to be made for its approval. This meeting of the Rutherford County Planning Commission is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting the meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus. Is there a motion? Have a motion over here and a second over here. Call the roll.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Greg Lynch.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogle.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That was a total of every one of our commissioners that are here today. If it would be in order, we'll just consider that roll call right there being the roll call for our quorum and our roll call for everybody being here today. I'll ask for an approval of our minutes, or do we have any minutes today?
We do not.
There are no minutes, so we don't have to approve those. Any items withdrawn or deferred? Items withdrawn or deferred? As you noticed, I'm not the normal chairman you see up here usually. Jeff Phillips is not with us today. He's feeling a little bit under the weather, but he is with us by Zoom, so he'll be watching and keeping me straight. Jeff, I don't know if you go through this every time you set up here, but I don't know how many times I've been told how fast are you going to move this today. So we're going to look at what we can do and move on. But in our new business, we'll go to item A, submit it for final plat in our agenda. First item on there is item one. It's the estates of One Mile Lane, number 202077, five lots on 9.8 acres, zoned RM, located along One Mile Lane. Scott Young, applicants.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Hope everybody's doing well this morning. This was actually deferred at our last day meeting back in September, so this does probably look familiar to everybody. As you stated, the applicant's proposing to subdivide this property into five residential lots. All lots are going to have road frontage, but Lot 2 will be accessed through an access easement to Lot 1, through Lot 1, in order not to disturb the stream buffer, and Lot 3 will be accessed through an easement through Lot 5. Lot 5 does contain an existing house that will have to be readdressed as their access point will change to Wilmore Court. As I stated a moment ago, this was deferred at the September 28th Planning Commission meeting to allow staff an opportunity to speak with concerned citizens along Wilmore Court. As you recall, at that meeting, there were some that had zoomed into the meeting that discussed some concerns. I believe they're online today as well. We talked to them right before the meeting, so they should be there. Our staff, our public works staff, has reached out and made contact with them. I know it hasn't been out of the property, but I'll let Mike kind of go into a little bit more detail as far as that's concerned. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Ben Friend, our public works engineer, has been talking with the Nolans, which are on the opposite side of Wilmore Court, and trying to resolve what the issue with their drainage in their backyard. And they have not, Ben has not come up with a solution yet, but as we stated in the last meeting, there is a ridge that runs near Wilmore Court, and the new house, based on the location of the property lines, will be probably, most likely, located in this area on the west side, excuse me, west side of the little ridge that runs kind of north and south along here. So we're not going to impact any more than what's going there now. There will be a joint driveway for the existing house and the new house over here, but we said that we were going to make this a critical lot grading plan, so we'll have to see a grading plan of the new house located on this side of the hill. Like I said, Ben's been working with the Nolans to try to resolve what's going on in their backyard. He says that it appears that the fence rows with the trees growing up over time have kind of humped up and prohibit the water from draining out. There's a ditch that runs parallel to the Nolans' property. There's a pipe that runs under Wilmore Court and runs to the back. But what part of the problem is it's got these fence rows that have humped up over time, and then we have an extremely flat piece of property that will flow kind of to the northeast towards Stewart's Creek. So that's what we're having to try to work with and try to resolve issues with that, trying to figure out the best way to help them out. But all in all, this development, the estates of One Mile, with this ridge kind of separating the existing houses from the proposed houses, really don't feel like this is going to impact their situation anymore. But hopefully, Ben and the Public Works Division of the Highway Department can help come to some solution to their issues in their backyard.
Would a gravel driveway be appropriate for that, or do you think in asphalt?
Well, I mean, not so much. I mean, a gravel driveway will get, gets compacted over time. I mean, we could look at purview spavers. I don't know. I mean, just it, there's really not going to be that much drainage coming towards Wilmore Court.
contribution.
Very, very, very small amount.
Just the perception of that, if that's running.
Yes, sir. Right. And like I said, the existing house and the proposed house, I'll see if I can show you the plat. There's the existing house right here, and the proposed plat has a property line near... So the proposed property line's going to run pretty close to that existing house, and the new property line will probably be in this location here. So that house will have to sit on this side of the hill. So we can, we can still look at a grading plan, a drainage plan, showing the water flowing towards this unnamed tributary that flows to the northwest. But there will be a little bit of runoff that comes off the driveway, but it's there now, so it's, I don't think there's that much more that they'll, they'll see. And like I said, hopefully Ben can help come up with some solution for their, their issues they're having in their backyard.
Mike, some of this land does lie in a 100-year floodplain, right?
Yes, yes. All of the new houses will have to have FEMA elevation certificates, and I can turn on that layer for you.
Hey, Mike, I understand that the neighbors are concerned about it. I mean, you said they're not going to get any more runoff than they have been now, but there may be a plan. Sort of clear me up here a little bit. Who might come up with this plan?
Well, it'll be, you'll need to have an engineered grading and drainage plan showing the existing topography and the proposed topography, how the water's going to, they're going to modify the ground that the house will sit on. They'll show the house plans, they'll show the driveway, the proposed grading and drainage, and we can see from that plan which way the water's going to flow. And because Mr. Whitworth brought it up, all these houses in this area, I believe, will need FEMA elevation certificates, so they'll have to be built above flood stage.
But is it possible that these houses being built will still have flooding in their yards slash driveways? Will their driveways be elevated?
That's what we...
Can these people be landlocked or waterlocked some morning when we have a 10-inch rain overnight?
Our flood regulations require that the house and the house pad be above it, but we highly recommend that they elevate the driveway to the, above the flood stage as well.
Reason I ask that, I know of a couple of people that don't have, their house is good, but they can't get to the road.
Yes, sir.
From their driveway.
Right. And with a FEMA flood along these riverine tributaries and streams and all that, the water goes up and then it goes down pretty quickly, relatively. But we always recommend highly that they, you know, be, in case of an emergency, they can get in and out of their house if a heavy storm comes, so. But all these houses will be verified to be above the FEMA flood stage, one foot above the base flood for the ground that the house will be set on, and then the finished floor will be two more feet above that. So it's a total of three feet above the 100-year flood event, is what they used to call it. But yes, all these lots in here, the orangish area on the screen is the 500-year storm. We don't regulate to that. We do regulate to the blue area, which is the 100-year flood, well, what they used to call the 100-year, they call it the 1% chance. There's, every year, there's a 1% chance that the water can get up this high.
Will the potential buyers be notified of this, that this house is in a floodplain? Is that your department?
That, we make sure the house is built to meet FEMA and county flood regulations. That's up to the realtor and their lender.
And it will, I was just going to say, it will be on the plat as well, that it's so...
Yes.
Right, yeah. Now, if somebody calls us to ask us, hey, I want to buy this house, is it in a floodplain? We could look and say yes, but of course, that doesn't happen very often, so that's why we ask for the plat to have the note on there that shows where the 100-year floodline is.
And also, you can modify the floodplain. You submit what's called a letter of map revision based on fill to FEMA. You present a plan to FEMA, you have the flood administrator review it, and he says, yes, it looks like this house is protected from the flood event, and then you can submit that to FEMA, and they, they won't revise the maps as shown. They will put a notation on the flood map saying that this, this house, this particular house, has been removed from the floodplain. Now, that's up to the lender. If they see that it's in a FEMA flood zone, they can still require flood insurance, even though you've proved through a FEMA elevation certificate that the house is above the flood, the flood stage, and is protected. But that's, that's up to the lender to require that if there is a mortgage on the, on the house.
Sorry to be so mouthy, but is that going to cause water to go somewhere else that it's not going now?
Well, typically, in the county, we require that they do a compensating cut and fill. So each, so the proposed grading plan, it's going to be a balancing act because these are on conventional septic systems. The septic system for this house lot, was it 3, 3 and 5, I think, that'll be accessed off of Wilmore. So they're pretty good-sized lots. They're three-acre lots. They've got some soils area down here, some to the north. So typically, you know, you can't get into the septic soils area. It needs to stay as is for the septic system. So when you, when you show us where the house is going to go, the fill lot, we'd like to see a comparable cut in it so we don't lose that storage capacity in, in our flood, floodplain. So the, I think the house on Lot 1 is outside of it. I might have misspoken, but it, it looks like the flood zone kind of runs through the middle of it. The house can be out here, so it, it will be already outside of the flood zone. You can have a septic system inside the floodplain, so it typically, as long as water doesn't stand over it for a long time, it's not an issue. TDEC does allow septic systems in the floodplain, so I mean, that's, that's just one of their rules and regulations. But we will, we will look at this and make sure we're not running any more water than absolute necessary to Wilmore Court, and we will work with the Nolans about, see if we can resolve some of the issues in their backyard. But we have, we have to have all the adjacent neighbors' permission to do work. If we have to come across their property, dig across their property, we have to work with the adjacent neighbors. Anybody that will be impacted by this, the Public Works Division has to essentially get a, a new drainage easement, Public Works easement across their property to access and to get, doing improvements across the property. So it's kind of a balancing act. They work very hard to try to resolve these issues.
Anyone else?
Question?
Question?
Doug and Mike, it seems like we're seeing this a little early. If we were to approve this, it still has to meet, I mean, you just said, neighbor have to sign off, the neighbors have to sign off on cutting through their yards.
That's, that's a separate problem. That's, this, this property, the way the, the land is divided with that ridge that runs, runs near Wilmore Court, most of that is on the west side of that ridge. The, the Nolans on the east side of that ridge have some issues in their backyard. So Public Works is working with them, but this, this subdivision should see any runoff, very little runoff going towards Wilmore Court. Like I said, they're going to have a joint driveway for the existing house and the new house on Lot 3. So with, with the lay of the land, most of the, the drainage is, is heading towards the west, towards this intermittent stream that runs through the property. But like I said, we're, we're going to put on the final plat stating that Lot 3 needs to be a critical lot grading plan. Lot 1 won't need it, but we might do the same for, can't read the lot number, Lot 4 up front, and Lot 2. So some of these, you know, will definitely need some, some help, but I don't see that these, these are tied together with the drainage being separated by this, let me turn the final plat, the...
If we were to approve this, this is the last, we would see it, the rest would be handled internally?
Yes, yes. So we would, here's that ridge I'm, I'm talking about. The existing house is sitting on that ridge. So a drop of water hits right here, it flows to the west. Drop of water that hits here flows towards the east. So that's the dividing line. That new property line is going to be somewhere right through here, and that new house is going to sit in this location here, on the west side of that ridge. So most of the runoff will be heading towards the, the west. There will be a very little bit from this driveway heading that way, but you've got water running that way right now. So, you know, Commissioner Bogle, you know, brought up the thought of maybe a potential gravel driveway. You know, gravel gets compacted over time, but, you know, we could look at purview spavers or something to help let that water soak in, you know, as part of the critical lot grading plan, so.
I was as much concerned about the gravel washing across the road because...
Oh, okay. Yes.
There, so just looking.
Right, right, right.
Anyone else?
Yes, and Doug brought it up. Could we include the driveway to be on the critical lot grading plan? Yes, we could. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen. Another question.
Commissioner Allen?
Are the Nolans on the call?
They, they said that they would be.
If they're on the call, I'd like to hear from them, because it was their concerns that caused me to want to defer this last time, and based on what I've heard so far, we're no closer to a, you know, a firm solution for them. And I know everybody's, you know, we don't necessarily want to try to tie the two together, but the, you know, the consequence of us getting this wrong could be potentially devastating for that family. So I want to know what their comfort level is with it.
Okay.
Lisa, I'm here.
Ms. Nolan?
Tom Nolan.
Karen Nolan?
I think it's Tom.
This is her husband, Tom.
Okay. Well, you're being recognized.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Like, our concern is Ben, you know, where this water's going to run, because we cannot afford to have another drop. Every time it rains, an inch and a half to two inches, we're holding our breath, hoping that it doesn't get up into our house. And, you know, the kid's, the kid's kid, and call it Lake Nolan in the back because it's that deep. The driveway that is coming off onto Wilmore Court, that is a concern, and I know y'all have addressed that a lot already, but it looks like to me, now, I'm not an engineer or anything, my wife isn't either, but it looks like to me that that's just going to create a funnel straight to our property, because that driveway's coming out right a little bit to the left of our house, and that elevation is a whole lot higher than the elevation at Wilmore Court where that driveway's supposed to be installed. And a 10-foot concrete driveway, that just looks like a funnel into that V, into that drainage ditch, which pumps more water straight into our backyard.
Would you like to comment on that?
Yes. Like I said, you will see, there will be additional, a little additional amount of water, but I mean, it's, for a short, little bit of area, I don't see that as that devastating amount of water running towards you. I mean, if you had a lot more impervious area coming your way, I could see that, but the issues with your backyard, it's not with what's on the front yard. I think trying to get the water out and across this extremely flat land in the back with these fence rows, old trees and stuff that have humped up and, and held the water from leaving is the issue. So if, if you could, talk to your neighbors and say, hey, Public Works is, is trying to help me out. We need to all get together and allow them access to maybe look at a potential digging a ditch somewhere back towards Stewart's Creek. So that's, that would help you out, help with the drainage across the, across this side, but, you know, this, this being a ridge line, you're going to see very little additional water coming your way.
Okay, it's just a, you know, there's a lot of things going on with that area, and every bit of water that comes into our neighborhood comes from that side of the road, across the road of Wilmore Court. It kind of funnels down into a V into our area where that drainage pipe is, so.
Yes.
I'd say 90% of the water that we get in our backyard is coming from across the street or those houses either to the left or the right of us across the street.
Well, I mean, that, that's where the water's coming from now. I mean, the, the ridge line is right here, and that water's going to continue to come towards your house. There's a drainage easement that runs beside your house. There is a somewhat of a swell, but then, once it gets to your backyard, it just kind of flattens out. And without sufficient fall, without a sufficient drainage improvements, and, you know, cutting down these humped-up fence rows, the trees in the backyard form up, you know, the roots grow up, they swell up, and they, they kind of trap the water in here. So that's, that's what Ben said he was, he was seeing on the ground. So that's, that's where we're at. I don't believe that this development is going to devastate the existing condition any more than it, you know, naturally occurring right here. So you, you know, we're not changing the flow patterns greatly. I mean, it's just, it'll be one combined driveway there with additional, I mean, we could, like I said, we can work with purview spavers to help soak in the ground. It won't run off, it could soak in to the, to the driveway itself. I mean, there's, there's, there's ways that we could reduce that.
Chairman, if we went back to the 1%, whatever, it used to be the 100-year...
Yes, yes.
1%, that whole neighborhood on the other side of that road was in the floodplain.
Yes.
Now, I think what we're, what I am hearing is that the Nolans and other neighbors in that area definitely have a water problem, and this has brought it to the Public Works' attention. But whether the development across the street is not going to increase or have a big detriment on their problem that they currently have, but hopefully, this has been brought to the attention of the Public Works, and they can help the people in this community with the water problem. But I don't see how the development, as Mike has explained numerous times, is going to affect it that much.
Okay. Ms. Aberwater?
I'm with Charlotte on this one. Looking at this map, clearly, that whole area is, is in the formerly known as 100-year floodplain, two days before any other construction starts. The only high ground on that whole street is that little ridge that runs through the property there. So obviously, that is a dividing line between two floodplains, and I don't feel like I can hold one property owner responsible for the problems of another homeowner, another property, if that other property is already has an existing problem. If this is not going to negatively impact those, I don't feel as I have any grounds to vote against it. So therefore, I'm going to vote to approve this request. I'm going to make a motion to that effect.
We have a motion. Have a second. Commissioner P., further discussion?
We amend, oh, go ahead. We amend that motion to include the critical, the driveway as part of the critical grading, just, you know, ideas of the purview spaver or trench drain or something to dump it in that ditch to prevent that sheet flow across the road.
Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of methods. We can, like I said, the purview spavers, we can have them require a thick gravel bed that allows the water to soak in instead of runoff.
Or even just not sheet flow across that road, I think, would be the critical thing.
Exactly, yes.
Right.
So you're basically making that with staff comments. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Kush?
I think those engineering techniques is, is what I'm after, because Charlotte and Jim, he has said it won't, 100, he has said it won't negatively impact, but he didn't say 100% negatively impact. I think, I think Mike said there is a possibility...
I mean, it'll be very negligible. I mean, very small amount of additional runoff that they will see.
Okay. But I guess if, if the neighbors across the street are already in trouble, even a little bit is going to impact them. So I guess my question is, could we not ask the developer or the owner of this property to put up a little bit of money for improvements for Public Works? to put up a little bit of money for improvements for Public Works to ensure that those ditches get done and improve the drainage back to Stewart's Creek?
That would be an answer. I don't believe Greg would accept money from a developer for Public Works, because that opens up a Pandora's Box.
I'm just wondering if there's, for me, a contingent approval based on assurance that those ditches get done for improvement all the way back to Stewart's Creek.
I'll personally, I will personally look at the critical lot grading plan. I'm seeing some really good Cumberland soil where this driveway will be constructed. That's great soil to soak in, that's excellent soil, so I guarantee you, I will look at this, and I will make sure every drop of water that can go to the west will go to the west.
I'm just concerned, the comment that Mr. Nolan mentioned, that it, up until now, flow from that side across the street heads towards his and his two neighbors' property.
Yes.
So, good soil or not, it's not absorbing at all.
Right, yes, sir. The problem is with his backyard, I'm sorry, it's.
It's a low spot.
It's a low spot, it's a flat spot, it's less than one-half of 1%. It is extremely flat once it gets back there, and you've got these old fence rows where the trees hump up and protect, you know, prevent the water from draining out, so that's part of the problem, is just the existing ground back there. I mean, and you can kind of see, that was not developed when it was originally designed, there's some large lots, because it's just big and flat, so.
I guess bottom line is, I would want, I would like to see some assurance that that ditch line, that tree line you're talking about, the, I think you've mentioned the drainage easement between Nolan's and somebody, one of the neighbor's house.
Yes, sir.
There's kind of an existing one there. I would like to see improvements made on that, and since this developer has a little bit of water going over across the street, I think there ought to be a little skin in the game for some improvements, or just some assurance that Public Works is going to take care of that and improve the ditch, improve the tree line, and make that flow a little better back to the pasture at Stewart's Creek.
Well, I can't, like I said, I cannot speak for Public Works. We work with them all the time, but, like I said, if a neighbor in the back says, no, I'm good, I don't care if the water builds up back here, I don't want you working on my property, the project's done for. You know, there's, that's why I'm saying, if you're friends with your neighbors back here.
Okay, then let me re-ask the question. Can you 100% guarantee that water's not going to flow across the street into Nolan and other people's property?
That water that's flowing there already now?
Approve this, and that site is developed, can you assure me that no additional water is going to go across the street, or you can improve it where even less water will go across the street?
There will be a slight increase, even with pervious pavers.
Then why would we approve something that we know is going to impact neighbors across the street?
Mike, if you look at that map, you're asking the impossible, you know, no one can give 100% guarantee, but if you look at the map, the creek, I mean, the problem is behind them, part of the problem, and what, and what Mike is saying is, those neighbors have to work together to get the water flowing behind them, and if one neighbor says, no, this is my property, I don't want you on it, then they're, I mean, yeah.
So, this committee has no problem then impacting another neighbor because we're going to put extra water on their property?
No, that's not what I'm saying. But I feel we need to trust our engineers and the lay of the land, you know, that's, is, yes, that is a problem, but as, it's going to get worse as the fence lines build up and build up, so if nothing is done, it's not going to get better. So, is the problem, is the problem across the street, or is the problem behind them? I think this has brought to light that the problem is as much, if not more, behind them than it is in front of them.
Is the drainage easement next, from Nolan and his neighbors, is that a public drainage easement?
That is a platted drainage easement, but because Nick might be, can help me out, because of the Highway Department rules and regulations, they can only get outside of the right-of-way with the Public Works Division, and the Public Works Division relies on Public Works easements that are new easements that are created by the Public Works Division. So, yes, there is a platted drainage easement, but no, the Highway Department does not have permission to step outside of the public right-of-way and work on that unless they get owners' permission. So.
Mike, you spoiled us over the years, you always tell us it won't negatively affect anybody, in fact, it'll make it better, that's your.
Yes, sir, I always, I strive, day in and day out, I stay up nights, you know, worrying about rain, but I strive to make everything, make it no worse than it is now. We can go above and beyond with pervious pavers, grading plans for an individual lot, but I cannot guarantee that even pervious pavers, they improve that, you know, you're not going to have like a solid driveway where additional water's going to run off, but, you know, any improvements, any change to the land, you will see a little bit, an insignificant amount of additional runoff heading that way. So, there is a public utility and drainage easement straddling the property, 10-foot on each side, that runs back to the back of the property, and then just daylights to the flat ground. So, this plat was approved.
Hey, Mike? Chris McGuire, Huddleson Steel?
I'm sorry?
Chris McGuire, Huddleson Steel? I was wondering if I could maybe propose something? What if we looked at doing a rain garden at the bottom of that drive that would drain into the garden and would reduce the imperviousness to, or reduce the runoff to less than it is now?
That will help, there's several.
Then we would be ensuring that the post-developed flow is less than the pre-developed flow.
It, yeah, well, yes, there are many options to help reduce the rate of runoff leaving the property, and rain gardens are one of them, so.
I guess I think just to maybe ease Mike Kush's concerns would be, I mean, we have plenty of options to guarantee that we aren't going to increase the runoff, we just kind of probably need to work with Mike Hughes and look at pervious pavers or even rain gardens, something that will capture the water and infiltrate it so that we aren't producing additional runoff.
Right, so, I mean, there's, you know, all kinds of tools in the toolbox, pervious pavers are great, you can have a thicker gravel layer, allows the water to collect in that gravel layer and that void spaces in the gravel, and then let that soak in, and then we, you know, we could look at doing a rain garden on the property before it gets to Willmore Court.
Mr. Chairman, may I revise my motion, please?
You may revise your motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, to withdraw my previous motion, make a motion to approve this subject to all staff comments and the engineer's suggestion that a rain guard be added in order to alleviate concerns regarding additional drainage from the property.
And the second's over here. Now, is there further discussion in this motion, or an amendment to that motion, or whatever?
The motion's fine, I have one last question, maybe a legal question. On the drainage easement.
Yes, sir.
Do both properties on either side of that easement have to agree to let county?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Nolan and whoever else is his neighbor would have to get together and say, hey, can we improve this?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying, everybody has to be on board. If they're not on board, that causes all kinds of issues with Public Works. They, you know, if you can't, if they can't access the property or dig on one side of an easement, it, you know, it kind of nullifies the plan.
Will you make, I don't know if Mr. Nolan's still on the call, but would you or Doug make sure that he understands what he would have to do?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying.
To get Public Works involved.
If he's, if he knows his neighbors, lived there a long time, talk to them all and say, hey, we're trying to get Public Works out here to make some improvements, but we need your help, we need your help. You have to, you have to sign off on a Public Works easement, you know, it's a recorded easement.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second, and it's with staff comments.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen, I have a comment.
Okay, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. The whole reason that we deferred this the last time we heard it was for Public Works to get with the Nolans to figure out a solution, and Mike's opening comments were, that solution has not yet been found, and so, without some sort of a comprehensive plan in place, you know, I keep hearing, it seems like there's several dominos that need to fall in order to make this work correctly, and so, I just want to go on record saying, I don't feel like we've done our due diligence as a county to sufficiently protect the drainage in that area, so I will be voting no.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Call the roll.
Charlotte P.? Chip Pinion?
No.
Craig Lynch? David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater? Lee Bogle? Marvin Whitworth? Mike Kush? Rhonda Allen?
Hey, boys.
Rhonda Allen?
No.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to A2. Lots 1 and 2, Parks Blackman, number 202091, two lots on 0.9 acres. Zone RMF located along Blackman Road, Bob Parks, the applicant.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property, as exists today, contains several duplexes that were legally established over time. The applicant would like to subdivide off two of these duplexes, one on each lot. The problem that they're running into at this point is, these properties are zoned residential multifamily, RMF. We don't have a whole lot of that zoning in the county, and pretty much the zoning that we do have, the property that is zoned, that there are, like I said, in this situation, they're pre-existing duplexes or something to that effect. The RMF zone does require a 25-foot side setback. The structures themselves are only 48 feet apart, so it's not possible for both structures to meet the required setback, even if they split it evenly, both of them are going to have a setback issue. So, one of our comments, back to the engineers on this, was that a Board of Zoning Appeal variance would have to be applied for and granted prior to this plat being recorded. Now, again, these have been in existence for quite some time, they predate the existing zoning regulations that we have. That's really the big issue, the biggest issue. There's one other issue, as you can see on the plat, their soils area is actually going to be off-site, their soils areas, both of them, if you see, it's both to the, I guess that'd be the west, the rear of the properties, as you can see. The rest of our comments, besides those two, have been addressed. Now, I would like to reiterate, if this is approved, we will not sign this plat until they make an application to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the side setback variance for both of those lots. The Planning Commission does have the ability to grant the off-site soil waiver for these, but not the setback variance. So, again, besides those two issues, our comments have been addressed, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Floor is open, Commissioners.
So, really what we're looking for is just the off-site soil.
Yeah, I mean, the plat approval, of course, but the off-site soils is the big issue that you can do something about. Like I said, the setback variance is completely, completely different.
I make motion approve.
Have a motion to approve. Mr. Lynch, you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kush, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlotte P.? Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Craig Lynch? David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater? Lee Bogle? Marvin Whitworth? Mike Kush?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're on A3, Danny Travis, number 202093, four lots on 6.26 acres. Zoned RM, located along Stewart's Creek Road, Danny Travis is the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is proposing to divide this into four properties, four separate properties. There is an existing house on the property that will remain on Lot 2. After looking at our comments, we did have several, but all of those comments have been addressed, this plat is in good order, and we'd recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, floor is open.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Have a motion made by Commissioner Pinion?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Bogle, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlotte P.? Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Craig Lynch? David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater? Lee Bogle? Marvin Whitworth? Mike Kush?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen? Rhonda Allen? Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen? Pettis Reed?
Yes. Motion carries.
Gail, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my phone, yes, that would have been yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item A4, Estate of Buford Brewer, item 202094, three lots on 4.73 acres. Zoned RM, located along Stewart Creek Road, Virginia Davidson, applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant's proposing to divide this property into three lots, the existing house will remain on Lot 1. The fire hydrant can be supported, has been paid for, so that's not an issue as far as any kind of a waiver is concerned. Our comments, any remaining comments we have, have been addressed, and again, this plat is in good order, we recommend approval.
Floor is open, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Have the motion, have a second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlotte P.? Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Craig Lynch? David Jones?
Yes.
Jim Everwater? Lee Bogle? Marvin Whitworth? Mike Kush?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item A5, Capital Business Park, 202096, three lots on 14.56 acres. Zone EAC, located along Capital Way, Epps and Epps Mill Road, Rhodes Development, applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is proposing to divide this into three separate lots. The property is served with sanitary sewer from the city of Murfreesboro, so Murfreesboro Planning Commission approval will also be required for this plat, and their signatures on this plat as long with ours. Our comments, for the most part, have been addressed. There's a couple of very minor outstanding items, one of them is a typo, a typo at the bottom of the page, the date for October, they just have a small typo, they can fix that real easily, and verify the ownership information before it's recorded, but other than that, our comments have been addressed, and the plat's in good order.
Floor is open, Commissioners.
Is there any right-of-way dedication required with this?
Not on this one, it's already there, because most of that's on Capital Way and everything, so, yes, it's fine.
Any other questions?
There is no access off Epps Mill, all access will be off of.
Well.
It does border, but no entrances or anything is shown there.
I'm not sure if there's a note on that, now that we would see some sort of a development for Lot 3, now considering the. for Lot 3. Now, considering the location of that, depending on the type of use, we would have to look at to see if it's appropriate to have any kind of an access off of Eps Mill Road right there. But I would anticipate that, you know, most access points would be off of Capital Way.
Any improvement would need a site plan for y'all's review as well.
And city approval, since it's on the sewer, they'd have to have city approval as well.
Motion made to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Have the second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Charlotte P.?
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Craig Lynch?
Yes.
Jim Averwater?
Yes.
Lee Bogle?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
Yes.
Mike Cushing?
Yes.
Rhonda Allen?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Mike, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Is there any old business?
No, sir. No old business.
No old business. Staff reports and other business.
I did have something I did want to bring up briefly on this. I'd sent out an email, and this is in response to the last Planning Commission meeting we had regarding a kind of a work session for overlay zones. I have reached out to a consultant acquaintance that I have. We've known each other for the last several years, and apparently, he works on these kind of overlay plans and things, where you can have various items that you're looking at as far as, well, of course, we talked a little about design guidelines, maybe increased setbacks, whatever. But he is agreeable to do a training session on this for the Planning Commission. Sent a little questionnaire out. I did hear back from a few. Kind of my thoughts right now is to look at maybe something prior to the December meeting. At this point, it's looking like the November meeting is going to be a pretty stout meeting as far as the number of items. We don't have just a whole lot on the plat and plan side, but we're probably going to have about 5 rezoning requests, one of them being the industrial park on Sulfur Springs Road. So we know that that's going to be, it's going to be a lengthy meeting. So I didn't know if you really wanted to have something prior to that meeting. So at this point, I was thinking something for December, maybe prior to the regular meeting, maybe in order, like an hour, hour and a half training session. The feedback that I did get seemed to indicate that you would prefer to have someone actually here as opposed to a Zoom-type virtual situation. So I just kind of wanted to get some feedback on that, just to know. The gentleman's name's Kevin Tilbury. Just to give him a little bit of feedback as far as what the commission might want.
What do you think, Kenny?
So that would be the 14th? I was just checking the calendar.
Yes, yes, December the 14th. I was thinking we could do it, you know, our regular meeting's at 4, I'm sorry, at 6. We could do that, training at 4 or 4:30, something like that. If we did it at 4, that would give us an hour, hour and a half, plus a little time to get over here and make sure things get set up, which also begs the question, you know, we usually, we have our holiday dinner at the, right before our December meeting with everything going on with COVID. We were talking about that very briefly prior to the meeting, just myself, Gail, and Mr. Reed. Not sure if that's something we really want to pursue this year or not, considering, you know, the current environment we're in. But that's also up for discussion, I suppose.
Hey, we skip our holiday dinner. Just, if you want, bring your own, bring your own meal and at 4, or 4:30, whatever, and we'll just eat during our...
Kind of like a lunch and learn?
Yeah, a lunch and learn. There you go.
A late lunch and learn kind of a thing. Okay. And we might be able, and Mike and I will, we'll kind of bat it around, maybe with Mayor Ketrin and Deputy Sandlin. We might have some money in the budget, might be able to provide a little something, you know, for some, if it's a training situation. Yeah, there you go. Ham, turkey.
I asked Doug for gift cards, but he didn't.
So, okay. Well, if that's, if that's kind of the consensus, that's what we'll start shooting for then. So we'll start working in that direction. Okay.
Sounds good.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman. Mike, did you have?
Okay, anything else? Anyone may have? If not, remember that our next Planning Commission meeting will be November the 9th, here in this room at 6 o'clock PM. That'll be our regular commission meeting. If there's nothing else, I move adjourned.